And just ask her if she's able to turn on her camera.
Hi, okay, um, are you?
Because that just disabled me for everybody. I don't know, maybe because you're a co-host.
Not an audio, yeah.
So, Mr. Garcia, I think we're ready.
Yes, certainly, Council President. City of Trenton Council, excuse me, City of Trenton Council meeting March eighth, twenty, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five is now called the order. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter two, three, one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the city clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Vice President Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Frisbee?
I said present, yeah, it wasn't me on there.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison.
He's on his way.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present, yep, presente.
Council President Gonzalez.
Presente.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present, Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Koloji, and City Attorney, Mr. West Bridges. Thank you. And Madam President, if you'd like, I can read the invocation at this time.
Please.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, as I understand it, there is a presentation this evening. It is a Stacy, listed as Stacy Park update, and this will be given by our interim Director of Recreation, Mr. Paul Harris.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Harris.
Good evening.
Can we sit this for ten minutes?
Certainly.
With the hopes that we don't go over. Good evening, Mr. Harris. A couple of our council members just wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, I know Councilwoman Feliciano had a question.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Harris.
Evening.
So, when it comes to Stacy Park, and, and, um, and thank you for coming here tonight, and Council President, thank you for allowing, uh, the presentation to happen. Just for backdrop quickly, over the weekend, I received a, a phone call and a text message from a reporter, um, who was asking or wanted to co- connect with me about questions about Stacy Park, and had mentioned that a member of the administration had actually given her my personal cell number, um, to call me on the phone. I did not respond to anything. It was not appreciated that my personal number was even given out in the first place. So, me being me, we bring it here on public record so we can have the conversation so that we can find out exactly what is happening. With regard to Stacy Park and the work that was done, first I'm gonna say, the river looks great, wonderful. Where we have spoken to constituents, um, in that area, they have said that they appreciate everything that has been done. They feel safer and, and the like. So, we, we get through that part. Now it comes down to a matter of procedure. If you could just tell the council, what is the process for, for a job like that? What was the process that was followed when it came to, um, dealing with that vendor? Was there a contract? Did you bid? What happened? Tell us the process about that.
So, the process is we receive proposals, and those proposals are considered, and then if they're accepted, they're entered into the system, and then a purchase or a dispute. That's the process.
Okay, so when, in the case of Stacy Park, did you ask for proposals? Were proposals asked for to do the work at Stacy Park?
We received, yes, we received proposals to do the work at Stacy Park.
So, you put out a RFP, the city put out a RFP?
RFP is not the right.
Okay, so I'm asking, what, what was put out publicly?
So, what we said is we're looking for work to be done at Stacy Park. We described the work and we received proposals, and then we, if we accepted those, we entered in, into the system.
Where did you put the word out that you were looking for work done at Stacy Park?
With vendors who do business with the department on a regular basis.
Okay, so you solicited to, you put it out to bidder, to vendors directly. You didn't put this out to the public that you were looking?
Correct.
Okay. And when this vendor, so when the vendor was selected to do the work, nothing ever came before a council for us to vote on, if I recall correctly, for us to, to say that this was adequate or anything about payments to the vendor, why, why was that?
So, there were two items that did come to council.
Okay.
We have, uh, two tree companies, Rich Tree and Fair Tree. Those items are tree services provided throughout the City of Trenton. Council did in fact approve those resolutions.
Okay. Was there any work that was done at Stacy Park that council did not approve?
There was work, yes, those smaller proposals that we received, each in the, each proposal being under the bid threshold, forty-four thousand, yes.
Under the bid threshold of forty-four thousand? How many of those came in?
Well, there are two other companies that were involved, yes.
What I'm saying is, for the vendor that we selected to do the job, right?
So, yes.
How much did we pay the vendor to do the job over at Stacy Park? The one that was selected, how much did we pay? Not the tree man, not the, how much did we pay the vendor that was selected to do the work altogether in total?
Altogether in total is one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
One hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, so that exceeds a forty-four thousand dollar threshold?
It, it exceeds the, but each individual by itself does not. The aggregate is an issue, of course.
Right.
But each individual item does not.
Okay, so a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars paid to the same vendor who wasn't presented to council, how much did each job cost that the vendor did to get us to one hundred and ninety-five thousand?
The average was nineteen thousand.
So, the average was nineteen thousand dollars? And there's nothing that says, excuse me, um, that if in aggregate, if it builds to the same vendor, that there would be anything incorrect about that? I'm just saying, do I need to ask legal on that? So, if the threshold is forty-four thousand for, for a job or for a vendor, like, how does, how does that work?
Maria Richardson, Business Administrator, um, the law sees out two different things, right, uh, when it comes to aggregate, procurement law in New Jersey. Um, when it comes to the vendor itself, you can, if it's over seventeen-five, uh, you need to look at two numbers, seventeen thousand five hundred for pay-to-play regulations, right? Um, if the vendor has made any political contributions, after seventeen thousand five hundred, those, whatever services are, they need to be procured. But we get certifications from the vendors. I have not, uh, made any political contributions. That it's one number that we need to look. The other number, when it comes to aggregate, that we look is at services, uh, line items. If we are talking about emergency tires, for example, um, if it's one that, it, it doesn't have anything to do with the vendor itself, but with the service or good that we are acquiring. So, that number would be forty-four thousand. But it doesn't have anything to do with the vendor, but with the service that we are, uh, providing. Um, I have to say that in the case of any vendor for the city, right, before they even make it to the system, to the admin system, there are, documents that we need to provide to purchasing, like, we need to provide a certificate, um, of a business, a, a business registration certificate. And, uh, we also need to provide W nines, so forms. So, every time that we, uh, put a vendor, a new vendor in the system, that is information that we need to provide. In terms of the aggregate, it's like I said, we consider the aggregate for the vendor in terms of pay-to-play regulations and the aggregate for the services in term of the services, doesn't, nothing to do with the vendor itself.
So, thank you for that. So, would you say that a resolution still should have come before a council for any of this as, as we have moved along through this process?
Um, yes, if we consider that, you know, the aggregate was over the forty-four thousand dollars, my understanding is that what was considered at the time was the phases, not the aggregate, that there were, the job was done in several phases, and, uh, then, you know, it was the misunderstanding that because each phase was under the threshold, you didn't need a resolution. But the truth is that because of the aggregate, at certain point, it needs to come before the council.
Okay, thank you. So, let me ask you this.
I'm sorry.
You mentioned the admin system. I, I've worked with the admin system, as I've worked in the finance department and everything, so I kind of get how it works. When it came to this process and all of this, like, with the vendors and everything like that, when the purchase orders were put in for payment and everything, what is the level of, um, of approval that is done in the admin system? So, for these POs that happened, who authorized all of this to happen? Was it one level authorization, two level authorization? How did that work?
No, there is usually a three-level authorization in the system. Um, usually you have, whoever is responsible in each department for logging in requisitions, then you have a second level, that is usually the department director, and then the purchasing, well, it depends. Sometimes it's four levels. When you are using, uh, grants, uh, capital or trust accounts, then somebody else in finance also needs to approve, um, the requisition. And then the last level is, uh, within purchasing.
Okay, so, when the POs were put into the system before, you know, everybody saw this, it wasn't one or two people, it was different levels that approved the work to keep going with these phases and everything?
That is correct, and the thing is that, um, sometimes even, um, different words trigger a different level, like, and I will give you an example. If, if I use in my invoice, um, tires, and, uh, in another invoice, I use pneumatics, it's, it looks like it's two different services. So, the system, nobody's, you know, trying to do that purposely, but the system would not recognize that you are doing the same, you know, uh, trying to acquire the same services or the same goods.
Okay.
So, it's a lot of details, um, and yeah, whatever, sometimes you need to go back and, and put a resolution after the fact, or need to cure whatever error was made.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris, thank you, Beavis. I, I don't know if I'm gonna need you again with the next question. So, I remember when we were walking, um, along the, the river, and I was talking about the park that I wanted to put at the end and was asking about, right, near the apartments and everything. And it was stated that we had a consulting company that works with us that would have to look at that and see if it was okay. When it comes to permits and everything, for everything that was supposed to be done for the work in Stacy Park, were we supposed to have permits or anything for that work to be done?
So, the answer from DEP's perspective is yes.
Okay.
But the answer on the city side is historically, if you go back, they'll tell you that we've, we did not seek permits when we did this twenty years ago. We did not. So, the question is, is not us ignoring the letter of the law, is what is our past practice been? And our past practice has been, when we've cleared Stacy Park, and unfortunately, it tends to be every fifteen or twenty years, um, it doesn't, it's not solved. But that's exactly, that's the honest answer.
So, when we have the consulting company that we use, would the consulting company, do we pay them to tell us, you need a permit for this? We don't need permit, like, is that in their purview of what we pay them for?
They are licensed in all manner of areas, so the answer is yes.
So, they knew that we needed to have permits, and no one said that we should have had them because historically, we just don't do it, but we still pay them to advise us that we need to have permits?
I don't know, I would categorize it that way, but we, we acted based on past precedent. That's what we, that's what we did. That's the best answer I can give you. But we do have a company on payroll, on standby to advise us on when permits are necessary for all manner of projects.
And how much do we pay them?
Um, the last contract was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and now we have a whole DEP debacle about permits that we should have been told to get, but historically, we didn't do it, so why would we bother? Thank you, Director Harris, I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam President, I'm done with my questions.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr., just have a simple question. Uh, some of the reporting I've seen, um, had different amounts of, uh, the amount of land that was actually worked on, including one I saw that said a mile-long stretch of Stacy Park. Now, to my knowledge, Stacy Park does not run for a full mile, maybe I'm wrong, but, um, just roughly, how, how much acreage was actually worked upon?
So, Stacy Park is exactly thirty-two acres, and we worked on roughly thirty-two acres of land.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you, thanks.
Uh, Madam President?
Council Vice President?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mr. Harris.
Good evening.
Uh, thank you for joining us this evening. Um, I just want to say first and foremost, I agree that the waterfront looks beautiful, and it was, um, I'm not gonna say maybe a job well done, but it does look beautiful. Um, I did express concerns about that being a floodplain area, and, and asks what the city plans to do to mitigate the flooding going forward. Um, a lot of times, vegetation and trees and things stops flooding, and even hurricane winds and things like that. So, it, but I didn't get any updates as to whether there was a plan to plant new trees along the waterfront. And then fast forwarding, now we have the DEP report that basically asks for the same type of plan. So, where is the administration with establishing and implementing a plan?
So, uh, I just want to be clear to everybody. When we started this, it was, it was always our intention to do this next step. It'd be crazy for us to go and do what we did and leave it. It's basically like a mud zone. So, you cleared it, it was a jungle, it was overgrowth for twenty years. We, it was cleared properly, no trees, li- li- living trees were killed. Any, there's dead, dying, and diseased trees. So, now that you've done that, DEP now is reviewing what our draft restoration plan is, and that includes these phases. It includes grading, if possible, lightly. It includes, uh, hydro seeding. It also includes, um, what we call a license, bringing a license applicator in to address any kind of, uh, invasives. You need to address invasives. If you have a garden at home, basically, you know you can't plant if you have weeds, right? So, you know, but all that requires DEP making sure, first of all, you have the right process and you have the right vendor. But I need to be crystal clear. What you see now, and we've said this in the video on Facebook last year, that this is done in phases. Phase one is completed. Phase two now is, okay, bring in a, a DEP-approved vendor in, and going through each one of these phases. And if you ask me what the park will look like when it's all done, it'd be like a meadow. There will be new trees. You'll be able to see the waterfront. And the argument that we've made, and it's important, because I think it's being lost, you drive up and down this coast, every community has access to their water, so why shouldn't we? And people have been complaining for years, rightfully so, so we did, as we took action, and this is the result. It just takes time. There is no way to do what we did and then come in there during that particular season and then do hydro seeding. It's a delicate process. I just wanted to make that clear, and it's gonna take some time.
And hydro seeding, it, can you explain, elaborate what that is?
So, what's gonna, so what you have is imagine somebody with a, a hose on their, you know, and it's basically seed. We're baking holes with water mixed with seeds and fertilizer, and we're spraying it. It, sometimes it, it looks green, sometimes it looks blue. And what happens is after you've tilled the ground and made it so that it would adhere, you're spraying that all around. And then what you're doing is you're coming in and you're maintaining an order. You'll learn, you'll find that EPA did the same thing with our lead remediation at various sites in the city. If you go to East Trenton Library, if you go to Bruning Avenue Park, if you go to, uh, the, if you go to, uh, oh my God, the park behind North Clinton, Sunny Marine, that grass has grown and has come in, because what you did is you close it off, you water it, and it, you know, it's perfect. But it's, it's a process. I need to explain it's a process.
And that's just grass?
Oh, no, it's, so, no, it's more than grass. We need, so what you have now is, like I said, you want to stop the sedimentation, so you want something to grow and sort of bind the soil.
Right.
Okay, so that, the grass and other items are gonna do that, and then we're gonna bring in some other trees to do it as well. But what we're not gonna do is we're not gonna have a jungle ever again. That's what I can tell you.
Awesome, thank you. And have you guys created, when, when you made the assessment on what you were going to remove from the area, was there some type of inventory taken of all the trees, the dead trees that were removed, or diseased trees that were removed, and whatever other vegetation was over there?
Well, the vendors who do, the tree companies that were responsible for removing trees, not brush, yes, in their invoices, they were crystal clear as to what is being removed. Uh, and the, the, the quantity, yes.
Okay, can I request that information?
Oh, it's just the invoice, of course, of course. It's the invoice that the company's provided.
What was the company?
Oh, the companies that I mentioned were Rich Tree and Fair Tree. They're the ones who did the business when it comes to tree removal.
Okay. And in terms of the DEP saying that a lot of the dirt that was brought in being washed away, can you explain that?
Yeah, so I think that the issue we have again is, uh, misinterpretation of the letter that was received. So, there was never any dirt, I'm sorry, there was never any soil brought in, if that makes any sense, to bring any soil into the area. That's definitely illegal. So, you know, no soil was brought in. Now, again, even when it comes to grading, we're gonna have to get the permission, because what you want to do is, it's currently very hilly, but they're gonna have to sign off. They may determine that, listen, this is how it's gonna be, the current topography. If they say that's what it is, it's what it'll be, and then we'll just do the best we have. But now, we didn't bring any soil, and the letter also mentioned something about, uh, structures. There's no structures that were put there in place.
Right, and so, but the riverbank is still, um, solid. It's not eroded or anything like that. It's not washing away?
I can't, the riverbank is solid, yes. The sooner we have DEP sign off on what we've sent them, and we have a vendor in place, the better off we'll be, because you want to lock that in. As you said earlier, very right, smartly. Um, vegetation locks the soil in place. That's the most important thing we can do at this point, and we have a plan and a tight timeline to do that.
What is the timeline?
The timeline is where if DEP responds to our thing, we're gonna begin within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and is that gonna take long, or is that?
No, well, what, the ideal work is this, you have a, you identify a vendor that's on a state list. The best way to operate businesses is to find a co- a co-op and a vendor that's on that list, actually, an approved DEP vendor. And then from there, we'll go from there, and then they'll come in and they'll do the job. If you're, you know, we might, we definitely will come to council, uh, for approval if it's over the threshold.
Okay, and is there any type of remediation necessary with this aggregate amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that would be required to come before council?
I'm sorry, Council, Vice President, could you please repeat that question?
I was asking if there's any type of remediation that would be necessary that you would be required to come before council to?
Yes, we actually need to put a resolution indicating the amount of money that we spent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, so we're correct.
Um, for, for a specific vendor, there are two vendors, the ones that, uh, were in charge of removing the, the trees, those are already, uh, under resolutions that you approve. Last year, I think, um, yes, twenty twenty-four, so those are still under contract, but there is one that, the one that we exceeded the aggregate that we need to bring before you.
Okay, and what was, so Rich Tree, Fair Tree was the one that removed the dead trees. Who was the other vendor?
The other vendor is E and E, E and E.
And they've removed the vegetation?
They've removed the vegetation, and they, yes, they removed the vegetation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President.
No problem. Thank you. Mr. Garcia, thank you, Mr. Harris, so much for being in front of us this evening.
Certainly, Council President. At this time, um, it's my understanding that you'd like to consider or have the council consider a specific, a particular member on a resolution for consideration on zoning board?
Yes. I believe you have Ms. Maris Jones present?
Yes. Ms. Jones, if you want to come up to the podium.
Are there any council members that wish to ask Ms. Jones any questions?
And Council President, just so, just for the council's benefit, we have given you, uh, Ms. Jones' resume and letter of, uh, letter of interest on the day as well.
I'm sorry. That's all right, I always give everybody else a chance to ask first, so.
Go ahead, uh, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for coming, Ms. Jones, and, uh, wanting to serve our city on the zoning board. So, um, I know what we have here, uh, and thank you for providing, uh, your resume and your letter of interest. But if you could tell us verbally, and for, you know, anyone watching or here tonight, why do you want to serve the City of Trenton on the zoning board?
Um, I feel that my desire to help make Trenton better, um, coupled with my desire to learn, makes me a viable candidate. Um, I'm born and raised in Hiltonia, I'm thirty-seven years old, so I don't know much about zoning, but I feel like this would be a good starting point for me.
Okay, and then, uh, as an alternate, uh, you, I'm sure you understand that you wouldn't automatically be able to vote at meetings, but you could definitely observe the meetings, and should, you know, we have, uh, situation, one meeting, we had several people get the flu, or during COVID, got COVID, said they had to miss. So, all of our alternates actually had to, to fill in, so that would be a situation you're comfortable with?
Yes, most definitely.
All right, um, and that's all my questions. Uh, I was also a zoning board member for a long time. I hope you enjoy it as much as I did, and I have a feeling you will. So, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Who else? Council Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, good evening, Ms. Jones. Thank you for joining us. Um, I, I definitely appreciate your interest in joining the zoning board. We definitely need more people, um, more alternates, um, because we have been having issues with some of our boards, with meeting quarrels and things like that. So, I appreciate you stepping up. Um, while I understand that you don't have extensive knowledge about the zoning board, can you elaborate on any basic knowledge that you may have, um, and whether you have attended any prior meetings or anything like that?
Okay, so I did take it upon myself to research responsibilities of a zoning board member. Um, I did come across that they hear appeals, as Ms. Jennifer said, um, reviewing zoning applications. They ensure compliance with local ordinances. I know that they conduct public hearings, and they make decisions on different variances.
Okay, and, uh, so, besides, you know, wanting to see the city get better and getting involved, um, what would you say? Because zoning, you know, is, is a very important board in the city. You know, they are the ones that are responsible for saying what goes where, you know, coinciding with the you know, coinciding with the planning board as well and our land development ordinances. So what would you say is the, like a most pressing thing for you?
I know I came to one meeting and there were quite a few people here that were upset that a halfway house was going to be put in Mill Hill. Things like that I don't agree with. So hopefully, I know that I won't be able to vote per Ms. Jen said. But hopefully, moving forward, I can help with not allowing things like that to happen. Because I do not agree with that at all. And that's just one particular instance. That, and I know that there are dispensaries popping up all over the place. I attended another meeting where there was a dispensary being put across the street from a church. There were a lot of people here that were very upset about that. I'm also in agreeance with things like that not happening.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Okay.
Can we move to, may I have a motion to vote on Resolution 25-101?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Madam President, moving on, we've reached the point of public comment for agenda items only. If I could have the public comment clipboard for agenda items only. And to the public, public comment will be five, five minutes for each individual. This period is reserved for, could I have the other public comment clipboard, please? That's the one. Again, you may address anything on the docket that you wish. At this time, Madam President, we do not have anybody listed for public comment for docket items only. I'll call a last call for public, public comment for docket items only. Seeing no one, Madam President, if I can move on with the agenda.
Is there something that's on here, on the agenda?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, okay.
This is for an item that's on the docket?
Is this something that's already on our docket?
I'm not even sure. Is the docket listed here? I don't.
Let's see what you got there. And just show me what it is that you're?
What you want to speak on? Oh, yeah, you have it.
So, okay. So if you're listening for ordinances, then there will be, well, no, this is first reading and public, first reading, yes, feel free, sir. Go ahead, yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
If you would, just give me, state your name, state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes to address what you wish.
Address in relationship to the document.
Your name and address, period, to yours.
My location.
Yes.
Where I reside.
Where you reside.
Yes.
Name Joshua Vega resides 26 Timber Lane, Willimboro, New Jersey. 08046. I can just speak, right?
Feel free, go ahead.
Can you, can you just speak into the microphone? Thank you, can you repeat that for us, please?
Name Joshua Vega. Address 26 Timber Lane, Willimboro, New Jersey, 08046.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to speak to the ordinance that's listed here, 25-11. This is in reference to the vacant lot of 14 Ward Avenue. I believe this will be addressed today, but I just want to bring up my comments or concern. I stayed on Ward Avenue for about, since 2008. Lot has been vacant since, which me or my brother and local residents happen to maintain, right? At this current time, it's a tree that's very old, that's been falling down on a property I own across from it. So I would like to, you know, obtain the land, right? Clean it up and get it ready to be able to be attached to the property on 12 Ward Avenue. So that's my goal, in particularly that. Outside of that, I'm not sure how the dollar values are articulated or input on this. I believe on the rigid, original document, I indicated the total budget of 5,000. So I don't know how that would be considered as you walk through or talk through that. I think I would consider something a little less in event that, you know, in purchase, since that was the total budget. Should I continue? Okay.
Feel free.
Outside of that, the other document that lists me, which is 25-14, I believe that might be a type of graphical error because initially it was supposed to be for 11 Ward Avenue. That was a property prior known and owned by Keith Marshall, which I found out. Then in time, I found out that Trenton actually owns the property as I'd done my research. So now it's Trenton on property. Found that out about four to five months ago, after dealing with title work. That particular property happened to have fallen shingles, debris, everything falling apart. So because I own a few properties within that particular area on that street, I would like it to have, you know, the visual appealing and bring that property up to speed. Being a local investor and Trenton native. That's all I have.
Okay, that's well. It's, no, it's, it's this one, you have 14 Ward Avenue on 25.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On your call, Madam President.
We can, Rosie, hold on one second.
Certainly.
Got it? It was corrected here. Was that a cheat sheet? The cheat sheet probably is not correct. Yeah, 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 okay. Thank you, yes, we can proceed.
Certainly, Madam President, moving on with the agenda at this time. If you would like to ask for a motion to approve communications?
May I have a motion to approve communications?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, moving on with ordinances for second reading and public hearing?
Yeah, so Mr. Garcia, if we can, I believe that these are for 10-year terms.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that we put that, maybe change the title and correct this with that amendment that it would be 10-year terms for these, for the, for the pilot agreement.
Okay, you're asking, are you asking me to, is that a motion to amend the title of 25-009?
May I have a motion to amend the title 25-009?
So moved. Second.
Madam President, prior to the, you know what, I'll defer to the solicitor. Can we take that motion now or do I have to wait until after the public hearing? Understood, thank you. It's been moved and second. I'm sorry, it was motion by Gonzalez, second by?
Feliciano.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried for the amendment to the title. And Madam President, excuse me, I'll go ahead and read the title now. As it's written, ordinance 25-009, an ordinance approving the application of final agreement for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing a settlement agreement with the Layler Urban Renewal Limited Partnership for Block 18202, Lot 1, on the official tax map of the city of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time?
For a 10-years, for a 10-year term, so we hear that?
For a 10-year term.
That's good.
My apologies, for a 10-year term. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? I see none, Madam President. If you want to ask for a motion to approve, the ordinance has amended.
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Council, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-010. An ordinance approved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia, the same thing for 25-010. Can we amend that to also state the 10-year term agreement?
Certainly, is that a motion?
May I have a motion to amend 25-010 to include 10-year term?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll read that title as well. Ordinance 25-010, an ordinance approving the application of final agreement for a long-term tax exemption with Realty Management Trenton Urban Renewal LLC and IOP Pennington Urban Renewal LLC for Block 4201, Lot 1, on the official tax map of the city of Trenton for a 10-year term. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving on, Madam President, to resolutions at this time. Are there any resolutions, specific resolutions that you wish to extract from a potential consent agenda at this time or for that matter, ask questions to directors?
Are there any resolutions that any council members would like to ask questions or have removed from consent agenda?
Yes.
And Madam President, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to take into account there was a matter of some minor typos on three resolutions that we're just, want to make sure that we make known they are not of any consequence to those resolutions at all. And we'll make sure that those are, that we have those originals corrected.
Thank you so much.
Certainly.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am, just 25093.
093.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
25088.
88.
And that's just going to be for, a spelling here, that's all. 25090. 25092. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg, do you have any?
No, ma'am, I have ordinances, but none of the resolutions.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's it.
Very well, on your call.
So we have Councilwoman Feliciano on 25-088.
Thank you. The only thing I have on that is the Assemblywoman Verlina Reynolds Jackson, her first name was spelled wrong. So if that could be fixed?
No problem.
That was all, it could go on consent.
Thank you so much. All right, move that.
Noted.
Consent. And next, Councilwoman Feliciano on 25-090.
Thank you. Regarding the one about the Loretta Corp., 29,52292, it says erroneous payment. I just was curious, how do we make an erroneous payment of $29,000? Like, what was the error?
You mean, you mean 39,000?
It says 29,52292.
Oh, you're talking about the actual.
Yeah.
Um, yes. Good evening again, Maria Richardson, Business Administrator. The information that we received from our tax collector is that these individuals made duplicate payments. Sometimes they make payments. I don't know how I would make all those payments erroneously, but it's basically duplicate payments or they have paid already or pay less than what they were supposed to do. So we need to return the money and they submit the correct amount. That was the case with Loretta Corporation.
They have no property location listed here, though.
I can't find out what is the property location. I don't know what is the location. I can provide that information to the council at a later time.
Okay.
I mean, we only have the block and the lot. The property is identified, but we don't have the, I don't have the location right now. Yeah, most likely not.
Madam President, I'm just, I would, I would like a little more information about how we got to 29,000 and then the exact property location to be listed. Is there, can we, can I make a motion to amend this? That we, we allow it, but without that one on it at this time? Until we get the other information?
I'm okay with the motion. I'm trying to find the responses that the administration did provide us.
Give me one second, please, Council President.
If you could do, make the motion to, to ask for that information.
I'd like to make a, Mr. Garcia, I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution 25090 to remove the first item listed, the block Z. Yes?
I'm sorry.
Really quickly, I'm sorry. Just from the response that was received, because that was one of the questions that was asked as to why there was no address listed for the Loretta Group. And then also, why was that amount, why was 29,000 obviously being refunded?
It is, oh, I'm sorry.
And it says there is no specific block lot associated with this refund. Loretta wired funds, but did not provide any details as to where the funds were to be applied. So their payment is being refunded.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed that in your things and I did glance over it.
It's okay. So, I mean, I don't know if that answers your question, but that was the reason why there was nothing listed because they submitted these funds to us, but didn't specify.
Where it was supposed to go, okay.
Where it was going.
And then they submitted a payment with the right information. But as regards to this one, they didn't submit the proper information.
Okay, never mind then, okay.
You get with that?
Consent, thank you.
Thank you.
So that was, hold on, 90, right? Yep, 90.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. And then we have 92, did you still have a question on 92?
Yeah, just real quick. In the itemization of numbers here, you have salary and wages for the finance director, $100,000. We have a finance director?
No, we don't. But that is part of the 2024 appropriation. And so, because we really didn't spend that money, we are transferring to COVID obligations. I am technically the acting finance director. But I don't, you know, that salary was not touched.
Okay.
Yes.
That can go to consent. But I do have a question. So you're, you're the, you're the, you're the BA and the finance director.
That is correct.
But the salary, this salary doesn't get touched. Would your salary be affected or changed any by doing the duplicate rolls? or changed any by doing the duplicate rolls?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam President?
Oh, Council Vice President.
I'm sorry, I did have one clarifying question, because I couldn't quite hear the response. So, we don't have a finance director, we haven't for a while, so we've been moving these monies, so if we're not paying salary and wages on this, where is the money going?
Oh, wait, this is, this is, this resolution is authorizing temporary emergency appropriations, right? So, what we, oh, this one, I'm so sorry, I thought that we were talking about another resolution. This resolution, we, we need to appropriate the money for that position, because we are listing the position. The position is being actively listed, and we are receiving resumes and applications, but as of right now, the position is not filled.
So it is being advertised.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Good with consent? All right, consent agenda, Mr. Garcia.
Noted.
Next one, Councilwoman Williams for twenty-five dash ninety-three.
Thank you very much, ma'am. So, Business Administrator Richardson, this isn't regarding the bonds that would be issued, because we have some bonds that are coming due on May twenty-ninth. So, eighteen million that we would be issuing, that's just simply paying, because we would need to retire those bonds or convert them by the twenty-ninth of April, or May, rather.
We are actually retiring notes, but I am going to defer that response to our consultant, Mr. Everett. He is here, Everett Johnson.
Always good to see him, thank you.
Yes.
It's also on the question.
It's also on him.
That's just Johnson, no problem. Good evening, Council President, council members.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to ask this publicly, because we have a lot of outstanding bonds, and the, you know, conversions, the retirements, getting a schedule of them for our city, you know, we need to kind of get more information as a council for this, but also going forward, given the turmoil we're having in the markets particularly, I know when we usually issue bonds, we're locked in a certain rate for a term and so forth. So with these bonds, is this considered a simple retirement or a conversion?
So, you were right about converting, so we have, can you hear me? We have notes that mature on May twenty-ninth. We are going in to convert a majority of the notes to permanent bonds. The reason why we're doing that is because when we issue notes, and I've said to the council before, but I'll repeat as if you never heard me, because maybe some of you might remember, when you issue notes, they mature annually by statute. When you issue bonds, let's just say you issue for ten years, then you set the rates for the next ten years upfront. So we have notes maturing that we obviously don't have money in the budget to pay for, so we have to, they have to sell notes to pay off the existing notes that mature on May twenty-ninth, or issue bonds to convert those notes to bonds. Beyond three years, you have to make a pay down on your notes in principle, as if you had issued bonds anyway, and so we're at that point now, with a large portion of the notes, whereby we have to make a pay down, as if we issue bonds, even if we roll the notes over. So, usually Trenton has a policy of every time we get to that point, which is every couple of years, we issue bonds to pay down notes that are currently outstanding. We're not issuing, this is not authorizing any new debt, this is all debt that's already outstanding and previously approved by the council.
Okay, thank you, because that's a big concern, given the turbulence that we're seeing, like particularly last month with the bond market. Do you foresee, and I don't know that municipal financing, we can be this nimble, trying to take advantage of maybe where rates are versus where rates could go.
Well, I say that, I've been selling a lot of debt recently, and the municipal bond market is not, so far, I've been dramatically impacted by the stock market. Notes and bonds have been relatively, you know, close to the treasury market and selling at good rates. However, we won't be selling these bonds until May, so I don't have a crystal ball now, in terms of what the market will be in May, but as of today, you know, rates are still pretty, pretty fair.
Would the, the federal rates on T thirty or T bills and so forth, if there's any pressure on that, given your federal budgeting, what's going on with DOGE and so forth, and the chaos in the current administration, that should not have any effect on what we need to pay for a rate on our bonds to attract purchasers of the bonds that we're issuing? As long as we are reasonably attractive, we would actually maybe possibly be a safer bet for some investors.
That's a loaded, loaded question.
It is, but I.
But yes, you.
Thank you.
The city's a safe bet.
Yes.
In general, for investors in the municipal bond market. And the terms, I'm trying to think what you said in the beginning, because you said a few things.
Regarding, it was clearly a chaos at the federal level.
Yes, the treasury note market obviously would impact, impact any municipal debt that's issued in terms of rates, but remember, you have to issue debt no matter what in May to pay off your debt that matures, so whether it's bonds or notes, anything can impact it, but you have to borrow money no matter what, because obviously the city's not going to pay eighteen million dollars out of its budget for this year, in terms of debt service on these bonds.
Okay, and then just two last questions. What is our current bond rating?
Your current bond, underlying bond rating, and I knew you would ask that question, is B double A two.
Okay, and could you explain whether that, that's middling, or is that?
So that's on the lower end, and I'm glad you asked that, because that kind of tees up the resolution as to why I'm here to begin with. So the resolution before you is to authorize a submission of an application to a local finance board, whereby a local finance board would qualify our bonds under something called Municipal Qualified Bond Act, and that was an act that was approved, I believe, in the seventies by legislature, that authorized the state to utilize state aid received by municipalities with lower credit ratings, to be used to pay debt service on bonds issued by those lower credit municipalities. The benefit of that is, municipal will get the benefit of the state's enhanced credit rating, so the enhanced credit rating by the state is A two, which is three notches above the credit rating the city has, which will enable the city to borrow money at cheaper interest rates. The same way, if your credit rating was, you know, five fifty, and your parent had a credit rating of seven hundred, and you bought a car, and you use your parent account to co-sign, you're gonna get a better interest rate because of your parent's seven hundred credit score. Similarly, we're gonna get the benefit of the state's enhanced credit rating through the Municipal Qualified Bond Act.
Okay.
So that's why we're here today.
Thank you, and my last question is, has to do with the water and sewer, particularly water. The, this council has approved every single investment, to my knowledge, that we've made, purchases of new chemicals, things that have had to be purchased to improve the infrastructure of the water system. At a certain point, does that also not help us with our borrowing costs and financing when we have to issue bonds for water and sewer?
You mean by not, not help us?
As far as it being a system that the infrastructure's been repaired, that it's becoming more of a safe system, then may, you know, granted publicly, there are different, you know, the issues that occur, but we have been making the improvements into the overall system to make sure that it functions in the future.
I mean, that's not really a bond question, I guess, but in terms of from my perspective, from the finance side, as long as the, the system is, is receiving revenues, which I know what it is, sufficient to pay all of the expenses, from a bond market perspective, the debt's gonna be attractive. So, from a financial, they're not really concerned about whether or not the students were operating inefficiently or not, they just care about if they can pay back their money, from the finance perspective, and, you know, the city definitely has been able, has not missed the debt service payment, it's not in danger of missing so, its utilities are self liquidated, which means that the revenues generated pay for all expenses and debt service for water and sewer, but in terms of the intricacies of the water system and sewer system, I'm not a part of those conversations, I don't feel comfortable.
And I wouldn't expect you to be, it's just, our water system takes a lot of flack, and bonds, and, you know, concerns of some of our suburban partners in a system, it's interesting, to say the least, but what, how we're doing with borrowing, and the amount of borrowing we could do, that's a separate issue, I won't take up your time tonight, but I would like to at a certain point, but us being able to borrow as a city for what we need to repair in a system or improve, since it's a hundred years old, is a great discussion we need to have.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, sir, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much.
Madam President.
I need to look over here, Council Vice President.
Thank you. Hi, welcome back. Can you repeat what our current rating is? You said they kind of.
B double A two.
B as in boy?
Boy.
B double, okay, I thought you said D.
I'm sorry, no, B.
No, no worries, no worries, it sounds the same. And it, and it's okay if you don't know this off the top of your head, but how many notes are maturing in May?
The amount? Twenty-two million, twenty-two million, I think eight forty-nine, I have it actually right here for you. Twenty-two million eight ten.
And, and these are various notes, like multiple notes?
Well, general improvement, water utility, sewer utility, parking utility, for different purposes.
Okay. Yeah, well, both. First was the quantity, and then the aggregated amount, yes. So the aggregated amount is, is twenty-nine point eight ten million, but the, but the.
No, twenty-two eight ten.
Twenty-two, sorry, I wrote twenty-nine. Thank you, twenty-two point eight one zero, but there are multiple bonds aggregated.
Multiple, yes, multiple different projects that make up, basically, a lot of bond ordinances that make up the total amount of twenty-two eight ten, it's not one ordinance.
Okay, so, and you said, you said they either must be sold or converted into bonds?
So, we issued as notes, which you issued last year, or sold as bonds, raised the money to pay off the old debt, basically.
Okay, and so, our rates, our current rates sound the same as it was the very first time you came here, we still have the same rating, right?
The bond rating?
The bond rating.
Since this council's been in session, yes, the last couple of years, it's the same rating. I believe the beginning of, I want to say, last year, Moody's took the negative credit watch off of your rating, so at one point, they said negative credit watch, that was removed, which is a positive credit. That had happened the last year and a half or so, but the rating itself was B double A two for last couple of years by Moody's.
So it is approving in, in essence?
In profile, yes, but not the actual score itself yet. That's the first step into improvement, to remove the credit, negative credit watch.
Okay, so what, in your professional opinion, do you think that the administration needs to do to improve our bond ratings?
I mean, that's more of a financial advisor question than it is a bond, a legal counsel question, but they'll look at different, I can tell rating agencies look at their standard criteria, they look at the income levels of the residents who live in town, they look at your general fund, your surplus, they look at development, they look at a whole number of factors, and they have a matrix that they utilize to, to determine what the rating should be, given the town, but there's a whole lot of different factors that they look at, when they, when they actually provide that rating, but that's usually the conversation between the financial advisor and the rating agency, and not me as the attorney.
No, that was good, though, thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Consent?
Thank you, have a good day.
Thanks. Consent, Mr. Garcia.
Consent, Madam President, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve a consent agenda consisting of, well, all the items except for Resolution, the previously, Resolution one oh one.
Yep.
So that would be Resolutions twenty-five dash zero eight six, zero eight seven, zero eight eight, zero eight nine, zero ninety, oh nine one, oh nine two, oh nine three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, and one hundred.
Yes, may we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Moving on to ordinances for first reading and introduction, Ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero two, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as Hannah Alley, and identified on the city tax map as Lot one two two oh three, Lot thirteen, pursuant to NJSA forty A colon twelve thirteen B five to Edamiro Gonzalez for the sale price of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment on this. I just want to thank the administration, I have been working on this ordinance with the city for my two years plus tenure on council diligently and relentlessly, and Mr. Gonzalez has been trying to secure this piece of land by his house for several years before that. I know the previous councilman in the South Ward was trying to help him to secure this piece of land, and was, you know, to no avail, was not successful, and I'm just really, really ecstatic that we were finally able to make this happen for him, as him and his neighbor were working together to try to make this happen, as this was kind of an obsolete alleyway, and it was causing damage to his house, and it really wasn't necessary where it's located. So I really want to thank the administration and all its hard work and diligence and the back and forth with me regarding this sale, and making it fair for Mr. Gonzalez to now be able to utilize this piece of property next to his home, so just wanted to, again, put that out there, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President, too. I have a comment, one, a comment and then a question. I am excited that we have seven items on the, seven ordinances that are getting seven pieces of property back on the, the tax roll. My question is, which I've gotten over and over, and I know we've asked this question, but I don't believe there's still clarity on it, is there a centralized location where there are the properties in the city that are for sale? Along with that question, are there contingencies in place for individuals or whoever purchases the properties for a timeline in which there is time for them to act on it?
Good evening, Archlist, I'm the Director of Housing Economic Development.
Good evening.
The first question was the central location list. We have properties that we, we don't advertise them as properties for sale. What we do is work with individuals in the neighborhood, or neighborhoods, who wish to come in and acquire properties and identify them as properties that are owned by the city. We look at the condition of the property, if it's a sellable property, or if it's a demo property, it depends a lot of times on the condition, and also, in the strategic standpoint, of how that home or that property fits into the actual redevelopment of that neighborhood or the city as a whole. There are some properties that we own that we are not going to sell, because they tie into a larger strategic plan, but there are ones that if it's listed on, on, and we have public documents that list the properties that we own, if they come in and we are approached about selling the properties, then we take that under consideration, looking at all possible aspects.
So if an individual does not live in the neighborhood, but they are, let's say someone in the north wants to purchase a property in the south, so they're not aware of what's going on, or vice versa, there is, we have nothing in place to let individuals, especially Trentonians, know where we have available properties?
We have a central list that's been sent down to the clerk's office, and it can be accessed anytime, or through the assessor's office.
We'll be sure and disseminate the council.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the second part of that, is that are there contingencies in plan, once individuals are now getting this, because I'm glad that we're getting them back on the tax roll, but do we have something in, in place so that individuals, if they get, when they get these properties, they're not sitting again for another year, another two, and they're just being eyesore again?
Every property is sold with an attached redevelopment agreement or rehabilitation agreement, where there's timelines that have to be met. These properties that we're mostly selling right now are not, these are not properties that are going to be built upon, what they are going to be is they're going to be adjoined to existing properties, but if we sell properties to, a citizen walks in, we have three or four networks right now, where we have people who want to buy properties, they want to rehab them, and they want to live in them, which is a priority, homeownership. We have timeframes that they have to meet, to make sure that the property is done within those timelines. If it's not done within those timelines, then we have the ability to claw the property back and take it, take it back. We're also working, which is very important in this process, that people have to understand, is we're qualifying people upfront first, just like when you go for a real estate transaction, we qualify people walking in the door. So if someone comes in and says, I want to buy a piece of property, and they have five thousand dollars, but we know from, from our analysis, that it's going to take seventy-five thousand dollars to rehab the property, we look further down and say, okay. we look further down and say, okay, what assets do you have? Or what's the possibility you borrowing money to complete the project? Best part about that is a couple of programs, first-time homebuyer programs, look at fifteen thousand dollars. Second is two oh three K program from FHA has a program that we recommend to people to look at the broker, the lender, and what they will do is actually work with the purchaser to rehab the house. They actually assign a monitor who works with the contractor and makes sure the contractor's up keeping up the contract and making sure that the whole process is completed because FHA has skin in the game now, too. So they will, they will work with us and at this point, we're recommending those to people walking in the door. And we have a couple that we know that FHA, they're looking at FHA loans right now.
Thank you, Director Liston.
Thank you, Director. I also just want to say really quickly that I'm excited to see so many properties being sold, so I see movement in the department, so I just want to say thank you for that because there's a couple that we've all been kind of like hearing over and over that people have been trying to purchase for years. So we just want to say thank you as we see this movement in this department.
There's a lot more to come.
Yes, I know. I'm excited. Next week, you got a lot.
Yep. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Garcia, let me do your job.
Friendly reminder, Madam President, you need a motion in a second.
Right, that's what I was about to say, but I was waiting.
So prior to discussion that ensues on an item, you just want to make sure, yeah, ask for a motion in a second. And if you want to ask for one, you can ask for one now to approve.
We have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero zero two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero five, an ordinance establishing the appointment duties, responsibilities, and functions of city council member liaisons to certain boards and commissions of the city of Trenton.
May we have a motion to approve twenty-five dash zero zero five?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Can I, can I, I can second, right?
Yeah, second.
Second. No, Tuskus, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, second by Councilwoman Frisbee. Is there any discussion? None heard? I'll go to roll call. Council, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
No.
Noted. Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
No.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
That motion is carries. Onto ordinance twenty-five dash eleven, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as fourteen Ward Avenue and identified on the city tax map block two five seven zero two, lot thirty-four, pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen B five to Joshua S. Vega for the sale price of five thousand dollars.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash twelve, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty-nine Hampton Avenue and identified on the city tax map block two six four zero two, lot two, pursuant to NJSA forty colon twelve thirteen B five to Diego G. Barros for the sale price of two thousand five hundred dollars.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Feliciano.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash thirteen, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as forty-five Southern Street and identified on the city tax map, block eleven oh one, lot eight point zero one, pursuant to NJSA forty A colon twelve thirteen B five to Hattie W. Wilson for the sale price of one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as thirty-seven Tyrell Avenue and identified on the city tax maps, block seventeen oh one, lot fifty, pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve thirteen B five to Joshua S. Vega for the sale price of one thousand five hundred dollars.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Let me councilman.
I said councilwoman.
Just checking, yes.
Too fast? Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Wait, Council President, excuse me real quick?
Yes.
Was this the one that Mr. Vega needed us to change an address on or something? Was that documented?
I believe that one was the previous one. Was that fourteen to an eleven?
That was, okay, I thought it was fourteen.
So it's supposed to be fourteen Tyrell? Oh, on Ward Avenue?
On Ward Avenue, correct? Let's move back for a moment. Ordinance twenty-five dash eleven was approved.
I believe it was this one, twenty, yeah, twenty-five fourteen.
It's twenty-five eleven.
Oh, okay.
It's Mr. Cologie. We approved this on the first reading and apparently there is a discrepancy with the address. There will be a second reading. Would the matter be able to be amended then? Or should this be, yes, this is introduction?
Because it's already been voted on and approved, it can be amended at the hearing on adoption to correct the, what is it, just a number?
Correct.
Yeah, we, it's a, it's a non-substantive amendment. We can amend it before the hearing and before the vote to adopt it.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving back to the ordinance, give me one moment.
Madam President?
Council Vice President?
I just have questions about this matter. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to bring Mr. Vega back up, but when he first reached out, it was for fourteen Ward Avenue and eleven Ward Avenue. So just to clarify, what it is he is attempting to do, i- is he trying to buy eleven Ward Avenue and fourteen Ward Avenue? Or is it eleven Ward Avenue or fourteen Ward Avenue?
You can come up.
Thank you for letting me explain. All right, so eleven Ward Avenue is a single-family home that's on a corner. So that one, I just want to rehabilitate is, again, it's been falling for like the last twenty years. Joseph, I'm pretty sure you've seen it since you walked past her all the time. So I, I mean, I have the means to get it up and running, so it's literally just the moment, you know, things get moving. Now, fourteen Ward Avenue is just land that's next to a property that I own. And I want that to be joined for the individual who will be occupying it.
So you still, you want?
I want to purchase both, eleven and fourteen Ward Avenue.
Wait, so right now, we're just talking about fourteen, so you do want to purchase eleven, but that's something totally separate?
Correct.
Yes, okay, so we don't need to address that right now.
So then to be clear, there's no discrepancy with the address?
Right, so the address is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm only speaking about the other one that says thirty-seven Tyrell. I didn't, my application didn't include that address, is what I'm saying.
Now confused.
Council President? So when he spoke earlier, he said that he wanted fourteen, which is what we have here, right, twenty-five oh one eleven? He said, he questioned the fact, he said, my budget was five thousand dollars, but then he threw in the fact that he also wanted eleven Ward Avenue and for the five thousand dollars to encompass both of those properties, no? Okay, but you-
I want to offer five thousand dollars for a single-family home.
Right, so the part about eleven was him just throwing it in, saying, I also want eleven also. That's why I was questioning, did he want Tyrell? Did he want Ward? Like, what are we doing right now?
So right now, for twenty-five eleven, we don't need to amend that, Mr. Garcia. It sounds like he is still purchasing fourteen Ward Avenue.
So he doesn't want Tyrell? Does he want thirty-seven Tyrell Avenue?
Separate and apart, right?
Right, I'm not interested in thirty-seven Tyrell.
So we need to take, pull this then from admin?
So the ordinance is erroneous then?
Yes, they're going, it's going to be a motion to pull it, well, not a motion to pull it, the man, admins is pulling it. Didn't we just vote on that, though?
Thank you. So is this pulled by administration then? Twenty-five fourteen, correct?
Pulled.
Thank you, Colin, appreciate you.
Thank you.
BA, thank you. Pulled by administration.
And twenty-five eleven is staying the way it is?
Correct.
Okay, so let me take one as well for that. Thank you.
Noted on your call, Madam President.
I'm sorry.
Proceed, thank you. Ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty-three Hayes Avenue and identified on the city tax map, block sixty-one oh four, lot ten, pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve dash thirteen B five to Howard J. Jones for the sale price of three thousand seven hundred dollars.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ordinance, motion carried, I pause, ordinance twelve, twenty-five dash sixteen. Ordinance of the sale of, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one twenty-two Burton Avenue and identified on the city tax map block eighty-five oh five, lot twenty-seven, pursuant to NJSA forty A twelve dash thirteen B five to Debbie Parks for the sale price of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Madam President?
Yes.
Just want to just say something regarding this sale. I know Ms. Parks and her husband have been great stewards of trying to maintain the property next year and that they'll be purchasing. So going forward, there should be no expectation that this property will not be taken care of, redeveloped, as they, as they said they would, and that it will be something we'll be proud of.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg?
Abstain.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And with that being said, Madam President, I do believe we have reached a point of public comment. And so the public, public comment will be five minutes for each individual. Madam President, I have two individuals listed here. Mr. Vega, did you have another comment to make? Okay, so Madam President, I have one individual listed here at this time. Again, public comment will be five minutes for this individual. The council is, you can address anything that you wish. The council is not obligated to respond. Individual listed is Shak, I hope I said this correctly, Shakia? Is that? I'm going to let you say the last name?
Good evening, Ms. Shakia.
Is that a maker? Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Hi, guys. About a year ago, I came and I mentioned stuff about landlord-
I'm sorry, ma'am, if you could just give your name and address for the record.
Yeah. Two eleven Parkway Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey.
Thank you, go right ahead.
So almost a year ago, I came before you and I mentioned to you guys about a situation with my landlord. Also about how high rent has changed and you guys mentioned something about rent stabilization board and what you are going to do to make the city better. Now, I must say that I have seen some things and they're great. I would also like to give a shout out to all those organizations that help feed people in the city of Trenton from everyone that helps because a little do you know, it's getting really costly out here. Everyone is struggling somehow, some way that is not making it any better. But in the midst of me knowing what I went through and still have some issues with my landlord, I took it upon myself and several other young ladies in the community to find out some stuff. Even though the city made a city ordinance not to raise rent more than four percent, and we do thank you for that, it is not happening. We are having landlords that are forcing women and even some gentlemen, but mostly single women, into two and three thousand price gouging right now in the city. I have sent emails to anyone regarding that area of Trenton. I have tried to contact, but I have found out that only Ms. Stephanie Register is still in charge of this, so her hands may be full. But we have about four families that's about to be evicted. Yes, because it's in to find out after doing my research, having some meetings, talking to some attorneys, and even taking some civil rights classes, that we are facing discrimination due to source of income. Landlords will literally tell us that their bills is going up, our bills are going up. And according to leases, they can give thirty-day notice to have us evicted. With those evictions, I'm finding out that half of these landlords don't even have COs for their houses. There are not complete registries done on these houses with tenants in it. I have done surveys, I have sent out petitions, I have had meetings with people at the laundromat, check cash in place, and our elderly community. Because all it takes in Trenton to show to evict a tenant is you own the house and that they registered it. But the question is, was the registry done correctly? It's not. Landlords are not answering it to their complaint through municipal court, and they're looking for some, too. So I don't know if you can look at this or pass this? That is literally a young lady that contacted me along with emails and screenshots of text messages between her and her landlord. And I want to know, do the city finds that acceptable? It's not. They're transferring properties at a dollar here. They're buying their properties for forty thousand, not completing a full renovation and telling tenants that they're responsible for two to twenty-four hundred dollars. Now, what I want to know is if landlords are making twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred dollars a month in rent for one property, but they're only paying three thousand a year, less than four thousand in property taxes, what would that say for someone like me and other people that want to buy a house? Because I have talked to some homeowners, too. And new homeowners are highly upset that their property taxes are higher than tenant property taxes on their own block. This has almost been a year. I have two binders full and over several women and several gentlemen that want to pay rent, want to be tenants. But see, we can't do that because one eviction will tarnish us. Yet, even if a landlord house is in foreclosure, we still have to pay them rent. These landlords are losing their houses, they're taking out mortgages on them. They don't tell the tenant, new owner sweeps in for less than nothing, and now you have a fight on your hands. It's unacceptable. And unfortunately, the city doesn't have the proper person or are working on it to get someone to get in contact with a direct person. So I take it upon myself and anybody else that contacts me or any of our other ladies to do formal letters because we have no escrow. Once the landlord files for non- Once the landlord files for non-payment of rent and we send those pictures, when we get to court, the damage is already done. The option is, we should have paid and then filed them. But it's easier.
Ms. Shakia, thank you so much, but I do want to bring, um, because I know we've been in communications too. But, um, March 25th is the first rent stabilization meeting that will be here. I believe it's at 6:00 PM. I'll make sure you get the right time and, and stuff so you can bring this forward to them. Also, um, they are, there's one, I think two vacancies still on the rent stabilization board. Okay, thanks.
You hold on?
No, I'm only good.
On your call, Madam President.
We can proceed. That was it, right?
Certainly, Madam President, those are all the individuals I have listed for public comment at this time. I'll give a last call for public comment. Yes, sir. Please say your name and address for the.
My name is David Bonner, One Craven Lane, Lawrenceville, New Jersey.
David, I'm sorry, say that again?
Bonner. Yo, N-N-E-R. I just want to, uh, I told Ms. Shakia I would be here to support her, she doesn't know I am, but she knows now. I want to just, uh, piggyback off of what she said in that, um, and I made some notes. She absolutely has the documentation that the, uh, powers that are supposed to evaluate, monitor and, uh, and, uh, oversee the landlords. The process is not working. Um, from what she shared with me and my personal knowledge, the fact that a landlord can come in, buy a property, um, and disrespect the tenant that's in the property to the point where they raise the rents to double or triple, um, forcing them to be homeless, unacceptable. The fact that there is no, um, when, uh, individuals go to the Mercer County Court and are being told that they can't put money into escrow, um, to, so that their complaints can be heard, um, that's unacceptable. Perhaps some kind of liaison, uh, between, uh, the city of Trenton and, uh, the Mercer County Court when it comes to these, that might be, but I'm just want to make sure that, uh, that there is a line of communication, um, madam. Um, the fact that you, uh, said that you would, uh, bring her on, I know that she's been invited to join the rent stabilization board and, um, I'm pushing her to join council. That's it, that's all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and Madam President, those are all the individuals that we have for public comment at this time. And if you want to move on to civic comment.
Yes, can we, um, start with Councilwoman Williams, please?
Thank you ma'am. As many folks know, over the weekend, uh, lifelong Trentonian, uh, resident of the North Ward, uh, Mr. Algenon Ward Jr. passed away. And, uh, he did everything he could for the city, as he said once when, uh, both of us and many others were teamed and trying to stop the sale of the Trenton Water Works, that he gave his heart to the city and he didn't know how much was left. Well, he, he did find a long more time, a lot more time to give to the city and we shall be thankful. So please, uh, keep him and his, his family and his friends in your, your thoughts and prayers in these coming weeks. Um, I do have a couple announcements and, uh, an issue to like to bring up. Uh, first one is, uh, tomorrow night is actually our North Ward Citizens Police Advisory Council meeting and I see our great representative from the Trenton Community Street teams here with us tonight, as well as Director Wilson, uh, we always have a great conversation regarding crime issues in the city, uh, issues of quality of life, so it's at 5:30 at the Galley Baptist Church, 440 Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. And tomorrow night, we'll have a couple special guests. Uh, we'll have the new executive director, Tom Rust, for the Trenton Downtown Association with us, as well as Austin Edwards, who's the chairman of the Trenton Downtown Association. And he'll be joining us to help with, uh, having a discussion about, uh, perceived crime issues downtown, what is done to mitigate crime in downtown Trenton where our businesses are located and how we can better connect our neighborhoods and all the wards, uh, to downtown. So please join us. Uh, also, there is a need, a great need, uh, for election workers. Uh, I know you usually hear about this, uh, coming towards election time. But if anyone is looking, uh, to possibly be an election worker, uh, coming up on the, um, for the Juneteenth primary, uh, please call 609-989-6522. That's 609-989-6522 for Mercer County Board of Elections. If you go work the entire day, they pay $300. So it's, uh, pretty decent money for a good 12-hour shift and you don't, um, admittedly, on a primary day, it's not that busy. But the good thing is you're able to help, uh, be a part of our democracy, make sure that we have a clear, uh, clean, efficient election. And having done that in the past myself, I've always had a good time, uh, chatting with the folks I worked with. So please consider it if you're available that day, Tuesday, June 10th. Uh, there is training involved, uh, that you can go to. Uh, but again, 609-989-6522 and there are, uh, is a need for bilingual, uh, folks of Spanish, uh, different, other different languages you could be helpful with. Um, so regarding, and this is an issue that has continued, uh, for a long time and every single person on this council has spoken about it, which is parking. Uh, we spoke about this last time, it's an issue that's not getting solved. Uh, frankly, we need to start working on long-term solutions, uh, particularly what the focus, what the priorities are, I think, of what our park enforcement officers who are working hard, uh, they're doing the best job they can. But there are a lot of neighborhoods where we have people parking their cars right at the corner. So you cannot see someone coming in opposite directions creates really scary, terrible blind spots. Every single neighborhood in the city is affected by that. Those people should be ticketed. People who are parking right in front of fire hydrants or really close to a fire hydrant, that's extremely dangerous. That's a $300 ticket. We're not a city that, you know, doesn't need money, but that's not why we should be offering parking tickets or giving parking tickets. We should be doing that because of safety. So we need to have our administration sit down with city council, sit down with, uh, other folks from the community who could have a good voice in this and we need to solve this. And let's make 2025 a year where we solve this. Also, there is a severe need, uh, just in the North Ward with having a parking space or two dedicated for food pickups, uh, for Grubhub, for, uh, other businesses, for deliveries for the businesses themselves on 300 South Broad Street where Tim B. is located, one of the newer Latin restaurants. Uh, they have gotten a lot of tickets because, and I went out there the other night to see the signage, the signage is very, very confusing. The parking signage, uh, telling people they can't park during certain hours is hidden by a tree. And then what it really does is it doesn't allow people to park during prime breakfast business hours around 8 o'clock in the morning until it's after 9, 9:30, so they lose all that business coming in. It's very difficult for them to take advantage of the courthouse business, uh, and all the state workers that do come in, county workers. But that's also downtown. We haven't solved South Warren Street, we have to solve South Warren Street. We have a lot of food businesses, they could be doing so much better. So please, let's get together and work on that this year. Thank you very much ma'am. Uh, God bless and hopefully see you at the next meeting.
Councilman Harrison?
How do I start? Um, the last time Algenon Ward was standing at the microphone, he told everybody in this room, uh, about how he was feeling and what was going on in his life. Broke everybody's heart. Algenon's truly going to be missed. He fought for the Trenton Water, he fought hard in the community all the time for the less fortunate. So Algenon, you truly, truly will be missed. To let everybody know, um, have it in my phone here. The viewing is March the 23rd, Camel Funeral, uh, 1225 Calhoun Street. Viewing is from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And then Monday, um, March the 24th, Galley Baptist Church, 440 Martin Luther King Boulevard. Um, the viewing is 11:00 AM, service is 12. As I said, Algenon, you truly will be missed. Um, I would like to thank, uh, Meals on Wheels for, uh, allowing me to volunteer and a lot of other people. I'd like to thank the volunteers, Mary and Brian, um, for allowing me to go out there with them and, uh, help out in the community. Thank you so much. Um, I'd like to thank Paul Harris for all his hard work at Stacy Park. Um, Stacy Park looks awesome. And, um, grateful that you did that and you got it all cleaned up. So, that being said, I wish everybody a blessed evening. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council, uh, Vice President. So I am with my colleagues, I, uh, my heart goes out to Algenon's family. Algenon has been a major player in our community, um, very impactful. I had the pleasure of working with him on several endeavors, including just his past, uh, December with the Smith Family Foundation, he and his, um, legion, they came out and performed beautifully, um, for us and we were just working on another endeavor with him for our Black Lives and philanthropy. So he's going to be sorely missed. Um, he is missed, I, uh, just want to, uh, send my condolences to his family. On a, uh, happier note, I want to say congratulations to the Trenton Area Soup Kitchen. Today marks their one-year anniversary, um, of serving, um, folks with their food truck. They have served over 37,000 people in their first year and that is worth celebrating. So congratulations to them, they were out today on Escher Street giving out cupcakes. Um, so, uh, congratulations to them. I want to say thank you to all the directors, I, um, with my monthly, um, West Ward Community Conversations, I invite and they gladly attend all the directors and then other members of the, um, administration. They come out and they report out to our community what's going on in their various departments. And I just want to say thank you to each one of you who come out or send a representative, you are appreciated. And a special thank you to Director Wilson, who, um, if he's not there, which is very few times that he hasn't been here, he always has one or two representatives, um, there. So the police department is always representative, represented, but each of the other departments, I wanted to just say thank you to all the directors, um, for all of you, um, always, uh, taking part in the discussions and educating the community on what's going on in your departments. And I also wanted to say Stacy Park, I know that there's some hiccups and things that are going on with it, but, uh, Stacy Park looks amazing, it absolutely looks great. Pulling up dead trees, pulling out weeds, um, dead vegetation, I'm all, I'm for it. Yes, I am for doing things in decency and in order, but I am also for beautification and giving our community what it stands in need of and what it deserves. And that is a clean, healthy space, um, and where our community is not worrying about dead trees falling off over on them, them stumbling over dead trees. Our, uh, enhances this, the life, the community of our, um, the life, well-being of our community. So thank you for that. Uh, and with that, I, oh, I also want to say on April 26th, I'm having a sister sewing into sisters at Great Mount Zion AME Church from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That is for any expected mom. If you know of anyone who is expected, um, expecting a baby, if you are pregnant, please contact me, contact my office and we would love to, um, tell you more about it. I promise you it's going to be a grand time and if you don't, if you missed it last year, you missed a treat, but it will be, um, that much more this year. So, um, with that, I'm going to read a portion of the city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. I want to thank everyone for coming out on this evening, thank you to our directors, the mayor's cabinet, our business administrator, um, to all of you for being out here on this evening and everyone get in safely. Thank you to our, uh, council and our, our advisors in front of us and the courts department.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Good evening, everybody, um, I'm trying to make this. Can you guys hear me?
Okay, uh, you're just a little, uh, distant.
Okay, how about now, can you hear me better?
No.
Guys, still can't hear me?
No, we can't hear you.
Councilwoman, I don't mean to interrupt you, but may I call you for your civic comment?
Sure, that's fine.
Certainly.
While you do that, we'll go to Councilwoman Feliciano. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody, thank you for staying around, for being with us tonight. Um, I just want to say a couple of things really quickly, um, to the families of, uh, Algenon Ward, Algenon the Great from the Garden State. Um, my condolences, good man, good brother. To the family of Ms. Willamina Green, um, my condolences as well, she has also passed away. Wonderful woman, West Ward, City of Trenton. And then to the family of Alfredo Marine, um, a wonderful young man who has also passed away, uh, recently. My condolences to, to their family as well. As well as to everyone else that may have endured a loss, um, my heartfelt sympathies to all of you. Congratulations to, um, Quayshawn Williams and Mama Lou Dourlee on their celebrity, their second annual celebrity basketball game, the Thunder Games that they held on Saturday at Thrive Academy, it was a wonderful event, it was sold out again. The stands were crazy, it was just a wonderful, good time. Just about everybody that could be there was there and so shout out to them and their wonderful efforts and their teams that helped put all of that together. And then shout out to Coach Khalid and the team from Thrive Academy who, uh, won the state championship as well, um, on Saturday. So good, good job to everybody. Trenton Central High School is going to be having their, um, production of Aladdin on this Friday, 7:00 PM and Saturday at 3:00 PM at the high school. It's actually dual-language edition, so it's in English and Spanish. So anyone that can, um, go and support, please check them out and support the youth. I want to congratulate our council president, uh, along with the other honorees that will be honored for Women's History Month this Friday at 6:00 PM at St. Paul AME Zion Church. I am the keynote speaker that night, so I'm looking forward to, um, honoring and celebrating our council president as well as the other women, actually grew up in, um, St. Paul AME Zion Church, started singing there when I was nine years old. So I've, I've been in that church, it's been in my family a long, long time. So congratulations to you. Thank you to Dr. Manica Pelli, let me tell you, so I had a bat in my house, again, after he got done laughing in my ear when I said I needed help, I was like, are you laughing? He was like, no, 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 Councilwoman. So I got help, thank you. They came in with the swiftness, snatched the little bat off the wreath and threw it out the door. I did, you know, it was done. So, thank you, um, for all that you do, I appreciate you. Thank you, um, they're coming, actually Dr. Manica Pelli and his team, Memphis and everybody, they're coming into Trenton Central High School tomorrow for a career conversation day to talk to our youth. So I'm excited and the kids are excited for them to come for that as well. Um, on Monday, the mayor came and spoke to our Student Government Association and brought forth a good message to the E-Board. And then on Thursday, um, Mr. Garcia and his team are coming in to talk to the city council kids uh, about parliamentary procedures before they go for their first public school meeting, which will happen next week. So it's all about community, it's all about engagement and everybody stepping in and doing their part. So I'm grateful for all hands on deck. And then to, um, interim director Paul Harris. Stacy Park, wonderful job. It's clear, um, even when the mayor came to the school and spoke to the E-Board on Monday, um, a young lady spoke, one of our members, if somebody could mute Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg for a moment. They spoke to the E-Board and she even stated that she feels safe now walking along Stacy Park because she can see, and at one time she didn't feel safe, right? And a lot of the neighbors and everything also said the same thing. And again, I will say that as we walked and I was pointing and showing different things about the high stuff that was there over 20 years and everything, the, the people were actually thanking the mayor and I as we were walking and looking at what was going to be done at some point. Protocol is protocol and procedure is procedure, I do agree with that. And so we have to follow the rules that are in place. And if there are no rules in place, then we need to implement them. And regardless of what may have been historically done, you must correct what has been done so that things like this don't happen again. There are people that are looking to celebrate the city and then there's others that are looking to tear it down. And nothing that we do will ever be good enough because some folks are just not satisfied. Trenton is a wonderful place, we're on the upswing, we're doing the very best that we can do to make it better. We're doing the very best that we can do to make it better. But again, we do have to follow policy and procedure. And if none exists, then we need to create it. Thank you all for coming out tonight. God bless.
Thank you. Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Can you all hear me?
Put your mic on.
Sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, can you guys hear me now here?
Yes.
All right, good evening, everybody. This has an echo.
Turn off the speakerphone.
Time, always save time.
Just trying to make this really quick. Just again, my condolences to Algenon Ward. Hold on one second. Okay, my condolences to Algenon Ward and also to Alfredo Marin's family in their loss to cancer this Saturday. You know, my thoughts and prayers are with their families. I wanted to say that I'm also aware of the shootings that have occurred on Dayton around the middle school. Can't speak to any of the information about it at this time. However, you know, the city is doing their due diligence and looking into these shootings. I know that the residents have been contacting me and people from the school as well. So the city is doing its part. And once they have information, they'll release it to the, to the community, to the, to the public. I want to say again, thank you to my colleagues at Panama Alley. I don't know if all my colleagues remember, but you guys were a part of vacating this portion of the alley in order for it to be sold to Mr. Gonzalez quite some time ago. So I'm just happy that we've gotten to this, this part of it. And, you know, he's able to purchase this portion of the land to do as he wishes with it. You know, as he is a homeowner there and has been there at the end of Lamberton Street for quite some time. I want to thank Trenton Cats. Trenton Cats has done a wonderful job. As many of you guys know, I recently had a baby and I've had to read home. My precious cats of eight, nine years. And Trenton Cats Rescue has really come and helped me to help find suitable homes for my two cats that I'm going to miss greatly. So I want to thank them for their great efforts. And they've worked really, really well for the city of Trenton. So I want to give a shout out to them. And again, I just want to thank the city of Trenton and my colleagues for being patient with me during this time. You know, having a baby and, and going through this process of new mommyhood and really just trying to keep all of my priorities situated. So thank you again for everybody's patience as I navigate through this new stage of my life. So with that, I hope everybody has a wonderful evening and God bless and you all at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to start off by saying thank you to my colleagues that supported. My ordinance 25-001, defining and establishing the roles and responsibilities of the city council liaisons. It's important that we codify this because nothing existed in our codes that defined what a liaison is for city council. And that's important for the public to know what it is city council does and what our roles and responsibilities are, especially for those who are considering running for city council in the future, for them to understand what their jobs are. So I appreciate that, and I want to say thank you to all of you. On that same note, voter registration deadline for the upcoming primary election in June is on May 20th, 2025. If you are not registered or you have moved within the last few months, please update your voter registration profile or please do your due diligence to register to vote. As you heard, our, our bond consultant earlier, if I'm saying that correctly, how our bond ratings are based on the income of our residents. Our car insurance is based on, is on multiple factors, but includes our education. And our voter registration or the lack thereof affects our funding that we get or don't get in the city. A lot of people judge us based on low voter turnout. So please do your due diligence to vote and vote early. We have early voting. And I want to say on that note as well, that the, there are talks about Robbinsville wanting early, early voting in their town. But the board, the Mercer County Board of Elections only has enough funding to fund seven early voting locations. And this board consists of four people, two Republicans, two Democrats. And two, two of the Republicans wanted to, instead of adding one, an eighth location and seeing how we can increase the funding that we get from the state and the county for these locations, they wanted to eliminate the lowest early voting locations. That would be Trenton. So please do your due diligence and participate in our democracy because our livelihood, our economy, our funding that we get to the city is affected by you not voting. Thirdly, I want to thank you for acknowledging Quayshawn and Mama Lou Dourlee. Quayshawn Williams and Mama Lou Dourlee are the founders and planners of the Thunder Games, the Celebrity Game. And it's such a unique experience that includes people from every background that you could think of in the city of Trenton, from your, your regular, everyday workers, small business owners, community leaders, and elected officials. It's about bridging the gap between our public, our residents, and our elected officials and our business owners and things. So you know what we have in the city. It's about stimulating the economy, providing jobs, and providing opportunities to small business owners. So I appreciate everyone that had attended the game or participated in the game any kind of way. This was their second annual. So thank you and congratulations to them. And on that note, congratulations to Thrive Charter Academy. I do know that TCA is in Hamilton, but most of those students are Trentonians. And so I want to say congratulations to Coach Lear, aka Khalid Lewis. His, it's such a bittersweet moment, March 15th. He was, this was the first year. So Trenton, it used to be Trenton Charter Academy. Before that, it was McCorriston. Now it's Thrive. It's his first year as Thrive. And this was his first head coach position. And this was their first state champion that they won as a rookie coach. And it was so amazing. And the bitter part about it was it was the same day he lost his father a year ago. So, and his father was a basketball coach. And it's, and that's the legacy right there. So I just want to say congratulations to Coach Lear and all of his assistant coaches who trained up those boys all year long. And, and they came home with the ship to the Celebrity Game during halftime. And it was such an amazing thing to witness. I want to speak to the recent uptick in gun violence and the fact that the city suffered a second murder this year. And I just want to just be an advocate for putting the guns down. Just pay attention to what's going on and how these actions are affecting people. I know, you know, that was five minutes?
I prom, I promise.
All right, wrapping it up, put the guns down. And I also just want to do just a 10-second moment of silence for, if, if you may, if, if I'm allowed.
I'll defer to the council president.
A 10-second moment of silence for, for Algie, for Algenon Ward, for Willamina Green, for Alfredo Marin Jr., and for Willetie Jackson, who was the youngest cancer victim that we just recently buried on the 14th. She was six years old. Right, I also want to add two names to that since I, I won't do it because I was going to do it during my time. DJ Bank and also the Gregory family.
Thank you. I'm going to, Ms. Frisbee, just wanted to make a quick announcement really fast.
So I did not use up all my time. So this is adding, just taking up that little bit of time. But I did want to say thank you to the organizers of the celebrity basketball game for honoring myself and my husband on that day. We couldn't stay for the whole thing, only the first hour and a half, almost two hours. But I do thank you for honoring my husband and I. And I do want to wish our council president congratulations on her upcoming honoration.
Oh, thank you. So I'm going to be really quickly, but before I begin, I wanted to, you can start my time though. I want Breon to stand up for me, please. This young man, I just want you all to know that I'm excited to see him here. I am, he's a part of the upward bound program. I went and spoke to the kids over there, and I spoke to them about getting involved and the duties and roles and responsibilities of council. And I, I encouraged them to come out and be a part of our process. And so he said he wanted to learn more about the city. He reached out to me afterwards and wanted to come to city council. So I just want to commend you for coming here, listening, and jumping right in. He's actually, they're starting a petition also for changing the lunches at the school. So I just want to say thank you for being present. A lot of things have been mentioned already. A big congratulations to everyone who organized the celebrity basketball game. It was a beautiful turnout. Congratulations to Pastor Armstrong on 25 years of his pastor annual anniversary. As mentioned earlier, March 25th will be the first meeting for the rent stabilization board. So please come forward and bring some of those concerns to the board so that they are aware of what is going on as far as with the landlords and tenant issues. I also want to say, I know she left Miss Shakia. She and I have been in contact a lot. So I've always encouraged her to keep coming forward. And she's actually gotten a group of ladies to share their concerns and everything. So we just want to encourage them to get involved and be a part of that rent stabilization board so they can be advocates for some of our tenants also. Mr. Bonner, I, I like the idea. I think he stepped out. But as far as maybe possibly finding a solution to the oversight of the landlords, I don't know how that process works, but definitely something that we will look into because it is, there are some landlords who are taking advantage of our tenants, and it's not fair. And some of them are living in deplorable homes as well. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Let me just not make sure. There's some upcoming events coming up. Oh, and also I just want to say thank you to our Public Works Department on Rutherford, behind Rutherford Avenue. There's been a lot of illegal dumpings. And you all have, there have been residents who've been complaining about that, and that was taken care of. So thank you so much for that. And then just some upcoming announcements. Shout out to Councilwoman Feliciano. I didn't know she was going to be the keynote speaker until the last night. So thank you for being a part of that. As mentioned earlier, as far as eliminating one of our early voting locations on April 8th, you can go to the Mercer County Board of Elections from 12 to 1:00 p.m., sign up to speak and against it because as she stated, they are looking to remove the early voting location that has the lowest turnout, which so happens to be Trenton. March 28th, we have the Father Daughter Dance, and that will be from 5:00 to 9:00. Also shout out to Kim and Omar for coordinated the sun, the mother-son dance that was at Cooper's last week. It was so cute. It was really nice to see the young men dressed up and dancing with their mothers. Don't Disturb the Groove, March 22nd. And that is at Art Works from 8:00 p.m. to 12, I mean, eight, yeah, 8:00 to 12. Trent Eat Locals at Magic Restaurant, 826 South Broad Street. That is March 20th at 6:00 p.m. And I believe that's all my announcements. I hope I didn't forget anything. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Thank you to our administrators. Thank you to my colleagues, and have a good night, everyone.
Madam President, thank you very much. And if you want to ask for a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.